I just don't want to, uh, since we.
Got it.
We're going to go get us this. Right. Uh, welcome. We've just come out of closed session and I need the board to certify that only things related to, uh, personnel, uh, were discussed during closed session.
Mr. Johnson certified.
Ellie Johnson certified.
Weston Donald certified.
Lucy Ann Meyer certified.
Um, Miss, Mr. House, can I read about the, uh?
I'll read the whole thing. I'm sorry, I'm not used to it.
Anyway.
Yes, we're going to read the actual motions so that we know which personnel type things we discussed about.
First through two Virginia Code, section two point two dash thirty seven twelve D. Each board member shall certify to the best of his or her knowledge that for following. One, only public business matters, lawfully exempted from opening any requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the class meeting was coming. When heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the school board, a role of each member shall indicate his or hers occupation to these matters.
Thank you very much.
May it be seen.
Can you say it again? We'll just do it back before we hit this.
Lucy Ann Meyer certified.
Personnel certified.
Larry Johnson certified.
Larry Grove certified.
Mr. Johnson certified. Peter Dell certified. All right, uh, during closed session, we heard information on personnel report and, uh, uh, for physicians, uh, that were, uh, hired for the school and we heard, uh, two personnel cases, twenty sixteen seventeen zero one and twenty sixteen seventeen zero two. Uh, no action. Uh, the personnel report we had is under the consent agenda. Let's rise and say our pledge. Pledge and salute. Pledge, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. You have a moment, sir. Thank you. This portion of the meeting is open to public. We are here to accomplish the business of schools for our students' sake. The board does want to hear from members of public. Our comments have been limited to provide equity to all speakers and ensure that the meeting is reasonable. If length has been brought to the attention of the board from concerned constituents, then even though we've asked speakers to limit their comments to three minutes, this has not been effective. We will therefore ask that all comments from this point forward be respectful of that time limit. If you have more information than can be delivered in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the board. Ms. Rogers, clerk of the board, will be the timekeeper and will let the moderator know what comments are reaching or have exceeded this requested limit. If you have any questions during the session, you may ask your representative, representative for a school administrator for clarification after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for your company. Is there a, uh, a motion concerning the adoption of the agenda for the season?
No.
Second.
We have a motion for Mr. Grove, Secretary Miss Johnson. Any discussion? Home favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. So ordered, uh, donations.
I have two to report. The first one is from John and Susan Tenout. They donated, um, hair body Smith exercise machine. Very nice. And the last one is from Debbie Massey. She donated, um, teacher's helper slash mailbox, um, free K through first grade magazines.
Uh, and those donations, uh, will be also approved under the consent agenda. Not that we would just approve donations. We would do that. Hopefully not. Uh, there were three meetings in the month of June, uh, fourteenth, the twenty first, and the thirtieth. Is there a motion concerning the, uh, minutes for these weeks? We have a motion for Mr. Grove to approve the minutes.
Sorry.
We have a second one for Uden. Is there any discussion? Call in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. So ordered, uh, verification of the bills. Did you get a chance to review?
Yes, I've reviewed the bills. Everything seems to be in order and, uh, here for approval so we can be, they can be paid.
Thank you. And then we pay, the warrants will be paid during consent agenda as well. And, uh, we did successfully execute June the thirtieth, which was the end of our budget a year. And got bills paid on time and things cranked along and thanks to the staff for working late on, I think it was Tuesday night or Wednesday night, I can't remember now. Wednesday night, make sure that we were prepared. Tuesday night, yeah, Wednesday. To make sure we're prepared for that day and the closing of, of annual books, uh, to the penny. Appreciate that. That word. I have a couple of questions.
Sure. Uh, the, which, which bus is bus seventeen? Is that one of our older buses or, or do you know? Does anybody know? Now he spent forty-four hundred dollars on turbocharger. It's not a brand new.
It is, I don't know how old this is in the back of our, um.
I mean, where is it on the list, I guess?
Yeah, I don't, it's in the back of our budget. I didn't bring the budget with me. However, I do know the turbo, they had already gone back once. And Dave Whitehead said he felt like it was a turbo and they denied that it was a turbo and they did something different to it. And it came back and he once again sent it and said it's a turbo and they agreed his time and they fixed it, so. So it's not one that was in warranty.
So what did they do the first time? Think something went broke?
I know a whole lot about buses. It was something that they said it was.
Think something did went broke.
And he didn't. But at, at the first time when it was sent back, it was under warranty upgrade and then it came back. So Dave was more frustrated, but, um, the turbo did have to be fixed.
Opposed, no. Is there any other comments or questions regarding the?
Mr. Grove, that is in your, um, ticket's in the back of the budget.
I'll, I'm, I'm going to look it up. I mean, I, I think we ought to try to just keep some kind of running, I mean, account of bus expenditure per bus.
They do it per bus. I just don't have it in here. So, yeah, you just let me know. I can give it to, uh, to the board.
I'm just trying to think of it.
Okay. Yeah, they've always done that because they're inspected every bus. And so major expenses and this will go down as one. It's not that major.
A hundred and fifty bucks, don't worry about it.
Exactly. But we still do file it so that they do know per bus.
All right, uh, moving on to the approval of consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda? We have a motion, sir. Second motion, Miss Johnson, Secretary Mr. Uden, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. So ordered, moving on to reports of superintendent.
Uh, yes, sir, thank you, um, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we are on five point one on the agenda and it's annual resolutions. And that means exactly what it says. Each year we have to bring these annual resolutions to the board for approval again. And, um, Miss Ellis is running on main course. I'm a trust staying in order what she's got. Um, I believe Miss Ellis has VPSA. Is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, the VPA, VPSA resolution is an agreement that we give the schools permission to spend a hundred two thousand that is, that comes to us from VPSA funds. It is for technology and we're not reimbursed till May. So board has to approve it before we can spend money that won't come in till May. They sell bonds at the state level and then some of those bonds pays this to the division. And this has been going on for as many years as I can remember.
Is it, is it, um, acceptable to approve all of these, uh, resolutions at the same time?
You can absolutely do that. There's no questions on this.
I, I had a question about the payroll. Do you need to change that based on what we?
Are you, are you switched payroll?
Because of our process.
Uh, no, sir. The accounts payable resolution just gives permission for the chairman and their assets. The vice chair can sign the bills.
That's better. Even if I should change something.
Oh, you want payroll resolution. I meant that account. I'm sorry.
Payroll, listen.
Payroll.
See, that, that says a couple of things that we might not be able to do.
Um, I don't think that you think that we can't do. We by, by law have to be sure that, um, Amy is pork is bonded, Deputy Park is bonded. That takes place. Um, if we're doing construction projects, it does say that I or the chairman has to sign it. We haven't had any of those coming through. Uh, we do have the, um, the warrants will still be signed by the county treasurer. That's not changing.
Treasurer's still true, yes.
Yeah, none of that's changing. Uh, the only thing that they suggested on that resolution to change was the accounts sort of thing. And we've gotten an update today on that. The resolution that they're talking about doing now with the county is having a different, uh, and Mr. Hunter and I know with Miss Kaiser, having a different accounting number for the school. We may even have two different account holders so that that separates it for Debbie Nick so that she can balance. But she still has to sign off on our, our bills. They're signed typically, Miss Johnson comes in and signs the checks. Amy, um, Roger has signed the checks and then Miss Hunter protects them and Debbie Nick signs them. So that's safe and sound.
But, but for payroll, it says on or about the last day of each calendar.
That's when they get it.
Huh?
That's when they get it. She figures that.
But did we have to do it before then?
Well, we were saying that we've always had it before. It's computed about the twentieth of the month and we're suggesting that we would have another twenty-four days notice.
Twenty-four hours.
Two more hours notice, excuse me. Today we researched that a little bit further and Debbie Kaiser doesn't think it's going to be an issue because what we're going to do to have another system in place that y'all mentioned is Mr. Hunter will notify Debbie Nick how much money we need and they'll move that money over. So as long as you give them a day to do it, it's in good place. So if it won't affect this, um, we've made sure that what they were trying to do did not affect our policy that, you know, tells us what we have to do. It's in very good shape. The only other one I believe, that petty cash is always going to have up to fifty dollars. And the term will pay for unused, um, leave resolution is the one that is in the school board policy. It's a regulation, but it wasn't a regulation done by superintendent. It was, um, actually, I believe a committee a while back, if you may remember, um, I believe Amy Hip was on that committee at the time. But we did, uh, it'd be ten years around hand account. We would just simply pay out and say, yeah, it's tiered like ten years and then like if you have like a longer twelve year check. And so you can't just get paid through sick leave if you.
And then we were there.
Well, it has to be years and you could have worked for twenty-nine years, but you haven't done ten years around the end of the year. To pay out.
That, that's good that you can transfer that stuff around.
Well, this is for terminal though. So if you, even if you're retired, you can't get paid. So you would end up having to use your sick days required to. Any questions? I have any other resolutions? Yes, that has not changed. Um, sick leave is our county's general leave policy. And it is twelve and a half days per month, uh, front loaded to teachers by policy and, um, fifty days for adding in because it's ten months versus, um, twelve months. And they are always front loaded. And if they were to leave us, then they have to take, you get the money back. We do not. Any other questions? And these will all be under, um, these will all be under, um, the, um, action thing.
My goodness, later.
Yes, yes.
Got it.
Five point two is out of county tuition. And I'm just going to ask Miss Hunter to come to the podium because he's going to also be presenting some things on behalf of Miss Wick who's on vacation this week. So I have the capital of screen, the out of county student tuition for this meeting seventeen.
Okay, first of all, about the bus, it was a, it's a two thousand man Uber. Uh, it's been in service for eight years and it's seventy-two thousand six hundred dollars.
Now, that's something you said earlier. Could you go on yourself, huh?
Yes, sir.
That was awesome. Thank you, sir.
I would, uh, just like to present to the board, uh, the stu- student tuition rate for two thousand sixteen seventeen. Uh, this is the same calculation that's been used in the past. Uh, and the rates are established each year in accordance with the provision of Virginia Code two two point one five. Anyway, same calculation. The rate this year is seven thousand forty-five dollars and eighty-six cents.
And I'm assuming that's cheaper than last.
Required by the state is there?
Yes.
It's the one that's required by the state.
Yes. And this is a little bit less than last year.
The invisible less last year's was seventy-one fifty-four thirty-two. So, um, a little over a hundred dollars, that's enough, Sharon.
And I think that's because our, um, composite index changed, you know, and so when it changed, it, um, caused the calculation to go down.
Yeah, again, the calculations are operation formers. You can see we have some calculations. And it just, uh, if you take the operations, like the by the body numbers.
That also is under an action item for board. And now we have notification of the, uh, food service rewards and so, Miss Hunter, if you will.
I'm going to try to substitute for, uh, Stacy here. Um, so we're going to, um, a little PowerPoint for the, uh, two thousand sixteen seventeen bid awards. Um, and, um, I wish share the, uh, bids for the sup- per food service program. So next slide, we have the, uh, the bids were awarded to merchants for all groceries, fresh, frozen, and canned. Uh, Shinks, uh, want the produce, uh, Schmidt, the bread products, uh, pet dairy, uh, milk products, and garbage for our ice cream. The bids are attached in the board packet if you have any questions. Um, also for the local food, food week vendors, um, those were awarded to, uh, Water Penny Farms, Thornton River Orchard, and, uh, Ryder Backfield Farm. Um, this is, uh, these vendors will be using for that local, uh, uh, food week. Um, all these vin- these vendors are necessarily the lowest, uh, vendors, but we are allowed to use them during that week. So although they didn't win the overall bid, we can use them during that.
Well, the only thing under the, uh, local foods that were cheaper are camelos and sus. That's the only thing. And then, you know, the wonderful, you don't really use local foods. If you look at the price down here, forty-two dollars for a bushel of peaches. And then six thirty for a pound of half-bread. Now, you, you probably think that's a mine, but maybe it is with yours.
Six thirty is not a damn question here.
Well, I'm saying though for school, we can get the corn store for five.
Yeah.
You can't get mine for five.
Mr. Hunter, we're back Ryder Field Farm, Ryder Backfield Farm.
Yeah.
We're in Stacy when I need her.
Yeah, we all talked about it today. We don't, yeah, we don't know.
I don't, I don't. I say anybody knows.
Do you not, Dan?
Oh, peaches are terrible, isn't it? I mean, the weather kills peaches.
Well, didn't have the. Do you know where Ryder Backfield Farm is?
It's in, yes, pardon.
Trying to find out where Ryder Backfield Farm is.
It's in Madison, yeah.
Oh, it's in Madison.
Who's talking?
About the right across.
Do you have any other questions? I'm not, you did.
No, I was going to say, maybe I should have let those sit down.
Yeah, you should. Karen, if you will, um, take that down and put up the, um, the bid list, the one that has.
It's a copy of the bid.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just wanted, um, even the audience to see that it went out to a lot of people.
Yeah.
Am I missing anyone? I, uh, picture the bottom left-hand corner. If you hover there, you should close it out.
You might have to be active, you have to be active.
That's okay. We have, we do have it listed anyway because she sent it out to.
Jenkins or.
Twenty-five thirty.
Yeah.
Uh, businesses to get back prices. And so every year we come back with the same ones because, you know, it's just hard to get prices as well. We have to use procurement, um, policies for this, so.
Well, you can never be beat, um, Russian's greatest and shake foods. Never, never. Have we ever? I mean, that's cheaper than that.
Here.
Right, well, that's right, yeah. Shake foods. Of course, I've compared them all every year.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hunter.
It's a long time.
Mr. Hunter.
That's right. The only thing that was out.
See, what I did in store, merchants. I guess they're, I'm going to do better. This is excessive.
Yeah. I'm going to get Karen just a second to get a comprehensive plan up there. Um, Miss Carol Johnson is in charge of, um, our comprehensive plan and she is not available to be here, but I do have her PowerPoint. And so I want to share that with where we are right now in the process. So maybe let her get this open. And for those in the audience, this is, uh, five point four. Okay, so the first thing is update on the comprehensive plan, uh, turning our eyes to the future July two thousand sixteen. So just to recap, members, uh, second slide, uh, members of the comprehensive planning team, Brad Barnes is a parent, uh, Robin Bolt is there as a technology person. Sherry Silo, and you'll be able to see these, represents headwaters and is a parent. So as you go further down, we do have some parents representing all of our areas, elementary, middle, special education, and gifted as well. And we did have some teachers on this, um, comprehensive plan. Now, the comprehensive plan is a mechanism for the schools. Um, it's not a community mechanism, but you do have community support by policy and, um, some input from them. And as you know, that we did hire a gentleman, uh, going to hire him to come in and to do this with us. And, um, his name is escaping me for a minute, Larry Brooks.
Brooks.
Dr. Larry Brooks, who actually teaches at the collegiate level and has been a, um, retired superintendent. And so he has led our comprehensive planning team. Mr. Grove is on our planning team as well. Um, he's led us through the process of going through this and we've got a few other steps that we have to take before we complete. Our comprehensive plan should be completed into the board by December. So if we go to the next slide, Carol wanted to give you an update on our April twenty-eighth meeting. Um, he gave an overview of the survey result, results, pointing out that, um, surveys were much more positive than most voluntary surveys. He did share with us that typically on a voluntary survey where people don't have to state their name, you get lots of negatives. And we end up with a lot of really good positive responses. Um, the people that took the survey were able to, uh, check more than one box. They could check that they were a parent, maybe a parent and a teacher, maybe a parent and a community member that had a business, that type of thing. So we had a lot of overlapping with information. Um, he noted that the survey had good content validity due to asking questions in multiple ways. What he did tell us though was he had never really planned on the survey being quite as long as it was. And we did have a few comments, uh, that Carol and I went over with Dr. Brooks. One of the comments, it was a negative comment saying that we're asking the same questions several times. But that is for content validity to be sure if you're getting the same answer and somebody's just not clicking boxes. So that is how the survey was supposed to be done. Of course, the survey was put together, uh, by the committee, um, with recommendations for Dr. Brooks put the, the survey together. Out of a hundred thirty-five total respondents, we had sixty-six that were, uh, county residents. So about forty-nine percent of the respondents were county residents. And he thought that was a pretty good response rate.
How come? How come they're more out of county than in county?
What do you mean out of county? I said they were county.
It says county residents, I'm assuming the others weren't.
Yeah.
Okay, what he's talking about is they checked the box. They checked they were county resident or they checked they were a teacher or they checked that they were. Yeah, so this was forty-nine percent were community.
It was to rank the county people.
Yes, she meant county, but she meant community.
They were not, they were not an employee or a parent.
Thank you. And, yeah, I just catch what you're asking me now. Yeah, that's what she meant. Um, and that was at the beginning of the survey and it kind of showed us other which categories they were coming from. Um, results of the survey, um, had overarching goals for the comprehensive plan and some ideas that we can look at. Uh, the needs related to, um, a lot of the needs that were the next step were vision and mission statement by the, um, school teams. What is the vision and what is the mission of the school division? So the next slide shows the June two thousand sixteen retreat information. The administrative team reviewed, uh, what our current vision and mission statements were. And basically the fact that our current vision and mission statements aren't really so terribly wrong. They're just very, very wordy. And one of the things that we have been taught was to try to bring those down a little bit so that everyone can focus. According to Dr. Brooks, you know, every member in the school community should be able to say what your vision and what your mission statements are. And everything should revolve around that. So basically Carol shared that the vision is supposed to be a little bit inspirational, but it should be in succinct with what's going on with the division and to the line of resources. The mission addresses for what, who, and how we plan to get things done. And that's much easier in a school system than in a business world because everyone knows, but, you know, who we're doing this for is the students or it should be. As we move forward. So both statements should be short enough that they are able to be articulated by the staff. So for the vision statement of the June twenty sixteen, we had a first day of our retreat. We have the second day of the retreat coming up next week. And so our vision statement that we came up with was to empower every student to reach his or her full individual potential. We talked about all kinds of things. Twenty-first century learners, good with technology, whatever. We just decided, you know what? We want them all, whatever their potential is, that's what we want to do. Provide an education that meets every one of their needs. Okay, for the mission statement, and it doesn't take just a few minutes to do these. It took us a really long time to get to this point. Through educational opportunities, the mission for our CPS will be to promote a culture of learning, a roadmap for excellence, and the passion and character that leads to each student's success. We really wanted to keep the striving idea of passion, a will to learn and to keep learning. We wanted to develop character. We wanted our students to be successful. And we wanted them to be, um, excellent learners, but to know how to go out and navigate the world around them and use the resources that are there. So we developed those two. And then the next steps for our process would be a statement of our goals, our specific strategies for the goals, and then a draft plan will be prepared. Now, post-planning, which is the next slide, is, uh, the plan will be put on the website. We would have, uh, the public look at what we put down and have time for a public hearing. And this is by policy. So we have to have a time for public input as to the goals of the comprehensive plan. Now, we've had people on the team looking and deciphering and, um, maybe surgically looking at every point that we do within the school system. And anyone could answer the survey that chose to, but we wanted to be sure at this point that we followed the rest of the school board policy, which is to have this ready for that process. So what I also, um, put on there for the board, um, there was some discussion about this. It was not recommended by, um, uh, Dr. Brooks. Said the actual survey goes out of the committee's hands, but I chose to put that for the board so that you could kind of see and just to share with the audience because they will know what this looks like. It's not loaded for you, Karen, so just stay where you are. But, um, it was just basically asking questions about different points of what we do and how we do it. You know, do we have enough community involvement? Do we have enough, um, resources for students? Do they have enough classes that they're able to take? And then he deciphered those down because he actually made those questions in categories, but he mixed them on the survey. So we had to come back and put them together with his results. And then he presented that to the, to the committee. And in doing so, we also had people answer whether they thought that this was important to them or not important. And throughout the survey, the things that we felt were important were also things that the community felt important. They want to have some ownership into our county public schools. They want it to be their school system. They want to have some say so. They want to be welcome in the schools. But most of all, they want their students to learn and to continue growing. And so we went through that. So we'll develop some goals. Um, he suggested that what we do is kind of write a little kind of autobiography at the beginning because there were so many things that were in last, the last six years plan that didn't come up as an issue at all. And so we said, I'm going to address those, um, so that everyone can read it and say, we worked on this area and this is, meets everyone's, um, expertise at this point. We think we're growing to be, but then these are the o- other areas we're going to start working toward. So the, that process will involve some teachers. When they come back, we'll have to work on that. And it'll be a lot of work done at the two schools, kind of coming up with some goal areas that they want to do. And then we'll tweak them, make them look appropriate to put in a document, present that back to the board and ask the board permission to go forward with this public hearing. So we will be following, and obviously AF is a little bit longer, but I did want Carol to put that in there so you could see it. So if the board has any questions, I did bring my, um, list of the questions that were on the survey and I didn't know if anyone had any questions for me or if you've had time to kind of look at that. Again, Mr. Grove was appointed as the board member to be on the, I shouldn't say appointed. I think I actually asked Mr. Grove to be on. I think he agreed. Um, but if there's something that another board member has a question or concern about, I'd like to have a chance to go forward with that with the, um, schools and see what we can address.
Just the time, so the timeline, the December timeline is to have things completed and voted on.
Yes, sir.
All of these, all of these intermediate steps have to be accomplished between now and.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We had a little bit of lag time, um, when Dr. Brooks came. He did a tentative and a timeline that Carol presented to the board. And that looked like it was going to work, but then, uh, Dr. Brooks had, um, some illness and then he was out of the country for a while. So that delayed a little bit, but I really did not want to take over in this process and present these results to the committee. We wanted him, since he started it, for him to continue. And he said he'll be happy to work with us on our goals as we're going forward, but I. But actually, according to procedures, I'm supposed to be the one that really comes up with the final document to present to the board. But it's awfully hard because you really want more than one person's opinion on what we're working on. You know, I feel so structurally focused, but it's now time that we are beginning to try to add more music in the schools, and more activities for the children, do projects based on, and I just felt we need a lot more of that kind of stuff into our next six-year plan. So that's where we'll go from there.
Do we want to think about, in the future, having a public hearing similar to what we had with the, that would be just a public hearing for this, as opposed to just something added on to a school board meeting?
Um, it can be the way you want it to be.
This is important, really important stuff. If we're going to follow it over a six-year period of time, and it should have lots of input.
And unfortunately...
So I don't know, I mean, down the road, we've...
Yeah, unfortunately, a lot of comprehensive plans are written, and they're put in a book, and they're put on a shelf. And it's really supposed to be something that every other year is come back and reported to the board on how we're doing to meet these goals. And I feel that Carol is working really hard to try to be sure that we follow policy on this.
Well, this is hard work.
It is, it's really hard, just like the vision and mission. It sounds easy to put it up there, and it sounds like great statements, but we, is that not true, Mike? I mean, a lot of time, and Gary, a lot of time went into trying to mold this into, is it really going to say, is it going to work six years from now?
Right.
And it boils down to, we want our children to be successful. We could have just said that, you know? But, so, so we will have, so it's a lot of work that we've got to do once teachers come back. And I think when they start looking at some of this information and saying, okay, now what would be a good goal around this? That's when we're going to get a lot of really creative ideas. And I think that's where it really needs to happen, sort of in a vacuum. But then, once again, we've already done one step of having public input, which typically does not happen in a lot of comprehensive plans, but to follow policy, people have a second one. So however the board wants to have this public hearing, it's totally up to the board. It could be the focus of a whole board meeting, and I don't put much else on the board package during that time. I mean, we still have bills and stuff, but I could save other, I usually schedule what updates we're going to have. I could schedule some of those at a different time. But it just depends on how the board would like to do this. I really think it should be in the auditorium so that we have enough space for people that choose to come in.
Well, I think we ought to make it reflect how important it is for...
It's going to be, I think it's going to be hard to get any enthusiasm to come out on a special night for a comprehensive plan. It doesn't sound good, so...
You know, one other thing that we could do, because we've done things like this before, is we could have our regular board meeting, and then the board meeting ends at a certain time, and we go straight to the auditorium for just the presentation. So we could do that, or we could just start in the auditorium. I mean, it doesn't have to move so that you don't have to take down and put back up. I had forgotten about that, I'm sorry.
That, that's a good idea, because you started the meeting and you focused on this, people could come, and go home if they wanted to.
And we could do this first if, if that's what the board wanted, I just, we need to know. And so I'll give y'all some time to think about it, but if you could let me know, maybe either through email, or maybe Mr. Mills, if you could kind of find out how everybody feels and, and let me know. We'll try to schedule what we're doing to get us to that point at the right time. Because I really feel like we're going to have to do this at least by November so that, I hate for you to see it that night, have public input and vote on it that night. I think you need to see it in November and vote in October. Yeah, I think we need the different...
Well, plus, here's the other thing that's going to happen, most people are not going to come out. They're going to watch the video, and then we'll start getting emails about what they think. And that's okay, because if that's the only way they can get any input, that's, that's fine. But we need to know, that's really the mechanism.
And that may be, maybe thinking about that, to move it to October.
Yes.
So you can get all that feedback, then give us some information in a public meeting in November, and then we have it ready for the vote in December. Okay.
A public meeting would be in October.
That's a lot to get done, I have to remember.
And they might watch the video tonight and be here in October.
Have they worked on those, that's a lot.
Even if they don't, if they, if we do the meeting in October, it's posted within a week.
Right.
There's still time to contact board representative and get feedback in.
Get something in the newsroom.
If they want to come, do they, I just think...
What would be a good time that you think for a public meeting in October?
Well, what if we just started our board meeting, I mean, six-thirty? We started it in the auditorium at six-thirty with this topic, and when it's done, we close the hearing and come in. Well, we don't have to vote, we can just continue the meeting.
Right, we can just stay here, okay. So, Amy, if we'll do six-thirty, October, public, mhm, public hearing on...
So advertise our board meeting and accept and open hearing.
Well, you'd advertise the public hearing on that to be followed, it's the board meeting to follow, something like that. Okay, so we'll move to the auditorium.
The reason to leave it at six-thirty is because that's when we usually are in open session? And that's what people are used to? Yes, or no?
We're going to, I, I think we have to officially say we start open session at six, but we don't, so yes. The part that, probably typically comes before is six-thirty.
So at six-thirty, we'll have the hearing, we'll be coming out of closed session to have the hearing.
Should have it at seven.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Six-thirty?
Larry thinks, and I, and I agree with that, if you don't, if you started at seven, that would give people to get home to learn at about six-thirty. But a lot of people that would be, maybe be coming, and be in a city, and they can get here by seven, but six-thirty's kind of hard. How long would you get here at six-thirty?
Probably get here at six, two-thirty, easier. Anybody else want to head to the... Let's, let's stick with, he, public does six-thirty, so stick with that pattern. And we'll come in at six and do whatever close things we can get done. And we'll have open at six-thirty, then it will be, at ten, will be public hearing.
And typically, what we've done, if we're in the auditorium and we have a closed session, we leave and go to another room, not necessarily here, and then we go back to the auditorium. Because there's no way to have it closed off comfortably.
All right.
Okay, so thank you very much. I will share this information with Ms. Johnson. And then the next I have is five point five, and that is the cohort. I just wanted to kind of give a brief update, I'm just going to do this to the board in an update that I sent them. But I'm just really excited about the direction that we've taken as a school system as far as investing time and money and experience into our teaching staff. The cohort, actually, the ideas for the EMU cohort began three years ago. Ms. Johnson already had it in place because Eastern Midnight University was excited about trying to do a cohort with us. We were able to, with our budget, to take care of paying for the master's classes for these people that were in the cohort. But what we did is ask that they focus into two different areas. The literacy or the technology, because at the time, that was the two areas that we needed the most. So I just wanted to mention for the audience here that Shelley Shankle, she did a project on closing the achievement gap with science, the category instruction, and she threw that project, her capstone, she earned her master's in education with a concentration in technology. Saw the presentation, excellent job for every one of these teachers, I was just so proud of them. Lila Wolf did the effect of using a digital pre-write on writing quality. And she received her master's in education with a concentration in literacy as well. Valerie Nealon at the high school did the effects of teacher writing in front of the students. And she received her master's in education with concentration in literacy. Beth Sealy is at the elementary school, she did the effects of using electronic books to first grade students, master's in education with concentration in literacy. And Elaine McKay, which is our Elaine Frank, her name is, come back to McKay, the effect of sight word instruction on seventh grade reading comprehension. And her master's is in education with a concentration in literacy. So that concluded the EMU cohort that we had for the three years. In addition to that, Ms. Eva Payne completed her master's degree in history from AMU and Radford University. We have two teachers that are currently finishing up their masters, we are paying for that one as well. Sally Shackelford and Scott Stevens, and theirs is in mathematics, so they've all been doing it at the moment. And their classes go through December. So many thanks to the board for the thirty-five-hundred-dollar amount for masters, it's very encouraging to the staff. That went over very well, and I think all of these people were willing to put forth their time. What I think is the most interesting is when you get someone out of a master's program, they end up coming back, and I had a visit today from one of these teachers that said, I'm really into this now. What else does a school need, because I, I just love taking classes, and I just feel like my brain is just exploding, I've got so much up there. That's great for someone that is still on fire for what they're doing. So just very, very, very excited about this. And just kind of wanted to have a chance, if it wasn't summer, I would have hauled them in here and asked them to give you a slight little blip on what they did, but I didn't want to mess up the... We'll make it some, some little updates as we go through the school year, but very, very happy with them. And we've already done the process through Title II. Shannon has already done surveys out to the staff on who's interested in what, to see about forming other cohorts? To see if, because usually if we do a cohort, we can get reduced rates, and, and doing that. And so we're kind of looking at that right now. We've got a few that need to finish up some odd areas, so we'll probably do that first and then start building cohort. So we're very excited, just wanted to share it with you. It's good news for our gathering.
Can you, can you describe, so you and some of the leadership team?
Yes.
Could you describe what went on when you went to this event on the eighteenth?
Yes, it was really, really nice. I want to start off by saying four o'clock in the morning, but we met and we carpooled. I mean, that really is true. We met Kathy Jones and Madison picked her up, and then went, Shannon Burnside went as well. And because of the Title II funds for this, Shannon kind of continued to coordinate this as it went along. But Kathy was, so many of them were her teachers, that she kind of followed the cohort through. I think Karen was on vacation during that time, so I, I think that's why she didn't go, it was a Saturday. And we went, and so they didn't know we were coming. And so we came into the room to hear that capstone project, which is a big culmination of what they've been working on, what they're studying. And very much to a thesis-type project that they had to present. So they had to have their data, they had to go through the process that they did for their research and what their findings were. And out of the group, the only other people that were there were professors that taught them. So we were all sitting on the back row, very similar to this, and they look up and they see us. And so at first, I thought, maybe we've made a mistake, because I saw a lot of really nervous looks. And then as it was going on, the big smiles came out, and the professors were saying, my goodness, look how Rapid Handic supports their teachers. And so it's really nice, they had cake and celebration afterwards, picture tagging, had a big meal planned for them. But just a lot of, I think, just willing to, to share the success and what they learned, and the facts that they may start, have started with one preconceived idea. And then you go through the master's program, and you find that your research said something different, or how you might tweak if you're using it again. But every one of them had left with something that they want to use within their classrooms.
At this event, they had to defend?
They did.
They had to defend their...
So they had questions over how they performed their research, and they had to have a very short presentation on that. Each of them did a PowerPoint, and they were talking about, and then they got in with the questions. And we didn't ask the questions, because it wasn't our place to do it, but the panel did. And they did an excellent job.
That's great.
So just a very good place.
Is there a group picture of these folks?
No, actually, there isn't.
It would be nice if we get them together and put something out there so the public can see what we've done.
Is that complicated?
Complication.
Do you agree?
Oh, yeah, we could bring them all up, yeah.
Get a picture like that and explain that, you know, part of, part of this whole thing, I, I can remember, we think it's important to promote education.
Absolutely.
With teachers, with professionals, with everybody employed by the system, as well as, the most important, the kids. We promote it with the adults, and the kids are going to be the benefit.
Absolutely.
So I think the public needs to know that.
Absolutely, and it, it's, it's so much work to this, that, you know, they bite off a lot in the beginning, and then they find out really how much work it is. But they, every single one of them said they would have done the end of the heart, they were thrilled. The good thing about the cohort too, though, is that in a cohort, you do have another partner that's going through the same act that you're going through, the same class, someone else to talk to and to, to bounce ideas off of. And so I think that was very beneficial for them as well. Yeah, but I thought their topics were really good as well. I mean, they could, these could be doctoral, thesis things, yes, as well, so, yeah, they did a great job. But I just, I wanted the board to know, and I wanted the committee to know, so I want to be sure we put it up there. And that concludes five point five. The only thing I have left from superintendent's report, and I'm going to need Mr. Yewen's help on this, is an update on the fill the bus project. Mr. Yewen was the brainchild behind this, and we have a bunch of pictures. I want to be sure I get this right, Mr. Yewen. The, the, the actual items that were donated were transported to Berkeley?
Berkeley County Sheriff's Office. They're going to be repacked, reorganized by, you know, this deodorant, this, so this is adverse to the baskets we took in, and then shipped out to the outside.
Absolutely, so if we go to some of the pictures, these are just some that Mr. Yewen sent me. And if you, where is this location, Mr. Yewen, is that there?
Berkeley County Sheriff's Office.
I believe I'm right, Mr. Yewen, that it took you two hours?
Me and my helpers unloaded the bus on Thursday about ten-eleven in the morning. Made two trips, truck gets rounded over, humped up. Came back Saturday morning, after work on Friday night, about four o'clock in the morning, four-thirty, and the bus was completely full again. And with our helpers, I managed to grab everything with the back of the truck and the cab, and made it get one trip. But the bus was filled twice, so it was, it was amazing. And then between the Fire Department and Sheriff's Office, we filled a twenty-four-foot trailer from front to back about halfway full, so it wouldn't clobber around, and it was, it was amazing, and we held it again.
I think, you know, this was really nice for our SDA to be a, to be a part of this, because it kind of gives that pride. But I really wanted to thank Mr. Tupper and Mr. Swindler, because they kind of did the organizing with the little sign that had the arrow, you know, showing where to go and, and what to do. And we just removed the bus, and they, and a good break to the side. And got that back, but we saved the sign just in case we have another opportunity. So if we need to try to pack it again, but just let us know. But I think, that one, that one is amazing right there, I think that's important.
Maybe we'll grab the bus straight up, or that'd be great.
Sorry. Yeah, Eddie got a voice over there. So, so, yeah, we were thrilled, really pleased.
This was a, this was a great effort. It started out with Miss Rubens, uh, Miss Rubens' initiative, and Doctor Mantis took hold of that. And I don't know how this, how the bus, how the pack the bus thing actually came, but it happened really quick. He was, he responded to it really well, the message went out through paper, through that. I sent it out to the Rapid Handic clergy association that got it out to the churches. And I think we were a great response, and it was great to respond.
Very, very quickly.
And it was common, easily outdone by location.
And we were actually receiving stuff on Friday. The bus was, I think Eddie took the bus on Thursday, the week before, and we were already getting stuff, because the bus was still sitting there, but we hadn't really planned on people really getting the message until Tuesday. But we had it in our email system where I could email, like, all the teachers at one time. And I was getting all these emails back saying, can I tell this organization, can I, and it was like, yes, please do. So you had a lot of busy teachers behind the scenes, really stirring this up, and that was wonderful for us.
We announced it at the fireworks. And, and I had people leaving, saying, when's that bus going to be there, when's that bus going to be there? We do fireworks, and we had about three, four thousand here in the front room.
Yeah, it, it was a great turnout. And in the beginning, you know, I mean, you didn't have to bring a whole lot, just everybody going together made it, made it really work. They put it on the front page of the website, I think it helped too.
It was a great idea.
We are going to do another type event, it's in the works right now with the Sheriff's Department, with our, I believe, Mike, it's going to be our honors society students, maybe something for the Children's Foundation. And so that's another opportunity to really do something nice and get community support out, to really, our, our children need to see this. It's good for them to see all the support and what you do when you're giving back to a community or to others in need. And we have a great group of high school students that do a lot with this service stuff, but it's, it's just also really good for them to see how you can, there's no excuses, you can turn it around. As soon as I mentioned Eddie, he had a bus ready to go, you know, Jimmy was getting the sign made. Mike was making provisions for where else it would be, and who was going to take up stuff, it should have been closed on Friday. So it worked out nicely, but a lot of community support, we appreciate it.
Can we, should we, or somebody, or anybody, write a thank you in the letters to the editor for next week?
I think it would be wonderful, if you want me to do it, okay.
Won't you? Well, you, somebody write it.
Okay. I'll do it on behalf of the board.
But I think that would be very appropriate, you know, just thanking the community, and give them a little bit of idea of what happened.
I mean, how much will that...
Absolutely, sounds wonderful. And I believe Mr. Swindler got an article in there about it coming up, I think he got it in at time. There was a picture of the bus or something. So he tried to do that, he's not here this week, but we'll get something, and Amy, you can just... She's my friend most of the time. And that concludes the reports to the superintendent.
Thank you very much, that was great. All right, moving on to reports of standing committees, the school board, budget and finance committee, anything to report? You all, that helped us make sure we closed the books. Y'all, that helped us make sure we closed the books.
Well, yeah, when you, yeah.
And we, suggested we give back about six thousand dollars to the board this morning. I don't know what the exact number was.
Uh, sixty-one something.
Sixty-one something. So that's what we did.
Um, thanks. Anything from facilities? I don't see the projects are still ongoing. The gentleman's here, he can tell us more and more if you want to know.
I, I do need to mention something that I did for the comprehensive plan. A good comprehensive plan also has a facility update. So what we were hoping to do was to get the committee back together one more time and do a walk of the school. And then, we've always completed the list of parties that was given to me, that were given to me when I came here. Um, of course, we haven't completed all of those at elementary school, but a good portion of those. But it would be nice to get another list so that we can kind of see, I mean, the principals have ideas and things, so they'd be part of this committee walking around. Sometimes somebody else is kind of being involved in it. And so I'd like to do that again. The technology plan is added to the comprehensive plan, but it's a totally separate document, and you get an update on that. Um, Rob is getting her group together for that. Um, the DOE has given strict guidelines, not to redo the whole technology plan, but to add one caveat in it. And that's because they're getting to the point of, in another year, they're going to change what is required for technology in schools as far as teaching. So they don't want to do the whole plan again. But all of those typically are kind of just added right on to your comprehensive plan. So we'll move forward with the facility. Uh, Mr. Uven, I know you're on facilities and?
I am.
Your own facilities.
Right.
So if y'all, um, will try to get a date, if y'all can think of that sign, if not, we take the committee and then y'all can also go back and Mr. Swinler and I can walk around with y'all afterwards and show you that they can, and help with other things. And we can do that by now, schedule.
You can find, um, Mr. Uven's available off five p. m.
Okay. Okay.
He's got the crazy schedule. And you probably will try to do that in July sometime, do you think, before school starts or?
It would be nice to do it, man. But, you know, I haven't really, I need that much. But it would really be kind of good. I don't think it would take much to get the group together.
Right.
There's other things that we're, I, I mentioned the day that we met, um, and, you know, some nod that they'd be able to come. It's just really hard for a lot of them to, I don't know what to, you might ought to be late in the evening time.
Do, do a walk around with the facilities.
I thought you were going to be here.
That's usually an attachment to your comprehensive plan. And so?
I thought you were talking about the comprehensive, comprehensive plan.
Yeah, that's who I would get to, I, I want them to walk around and watch what they're doing for community support. But I don't want to leave out the facility committee.
Right, within the evening, people.
It may be another time to do it, because people maybe can get there at certain points. Um, yeah, we could even do maybe at seven o'clock and be free, probably by seven forty-five or something. Mr. Uven, is that the market offering?
It's on there.
Okay.
I'm a four-four, I have some.
Okay.
So maybe they're offering.
Okay.
Fairly good.
Okay, I'll get with Mr. Swinler too, because I wouldn't have minded that. Um, seeing as we're on the area, so it's, there's a lot that's been done with age back, and I want to be sure we get that right.
All right, thanks. Uh, strategic planning and policy. Do we have a good thing to come soon?
Um, I, I have more updates, but, um, I haven't mentioned, so.
That's a quarter of the exercise, right? All right, uh, report of the headquarters representative?
Yep, it's in, based in September tenth. And you can, uh, reserve a seat or a table if you go to the headquarters homepage and go down to the bottom. I thought that was an important little, um, and, uh, they're continuing to make progress on the coral program. They're still searching for a director and a compass and hope to make the announcement soon. It's always to be positive. And this, uh, strategic planning is coming up, and that will be when they have the power from our joint. So, I know what they're doing. They're working on the taste.
Do, do we know the results of that survey that, do you have any idea on that?
On the coral survey?
Or maybe I shouldn't ask that question?
Slowly but surely coming in.
Huh?
Slowly but surely.
Slowly but surely it's coming in.
It's long.
Is that something we could advertise again?
It's still up there. Still on.
Advertise to the public so that people don't just come to the website on their own.
And for the kids, you need to get it to the kid. When, maybe when they come back first day, let them know that.
Good call.
Or an off-call. Can we do an off-call?
I think we've done one, we've done another.
Maybe people are all.
That might get the best of you.
We're all busy in summer.
Yeah, I'm blocking.
Well, they're loving it.
But an off-call might do.
Why, can you hear it? Do y'all, um, get them? Because they can access another, um, front page of the website.
All right, thanks. So this BSBA delegate and alternate delegate is a form that we fill out, uh, which needs to be sent in so that our names are on the list. And so at the November meeting in, uh, Williamsburg, right, we have the privilege of sitting and listening to legislation and raising our floss water if we agree. Uh, there could be a number of silly things that you end up doing to, to area voting, but, uh, we pick a primary and a secondary uh, to fill out and send this in. So tonight see who's willing to do that. So we can fill that out.
I read it, so I know we don't volunteer you and.
Oh!
You get volunteered.
I did it last year. I don't mind.
You don't mind? Officer Larry is primary. Mr. Grove, thank you very much.
When, when, which, it's the se- it's on the seventeen, right? So that's the day that we would if we go down just for a day, it would be the seventeen.
Same day. The only, the only thing I would say is it is typically later.
It's like two o'clock.
Two to five or something. Usually when the classes are over, we usually bug out, which leaves the delegates.
Hanging in.
(laughing) I'll do it.
He's too.
We have, well.
It's almost a but you don't know what's going to be there, it's going to be important.
You never know.
It's just going to be.
You know, so we do need a primary and then somebody to back him up.
I'll back him. Stay healthy.
And we could write it. Stay healthy.
So this Mark is the alternate and, uh.
Don't forget on that day and coming back that day, like we did this year.
Uh.
That's up to the chair.
This, this is just the, the seventeen. I don't think this is a part of the Williamsburg.
Yes, it is.
That's.
Yes, it is.
November seventh, yeah.
I'm pretty sure it's a thing to come.
Sure it is. Right there, that's it.
Okay, I'm sorry, it does say that. I was thinking this was the one day.
We're going to be there anyway.
Are we registered? We, we didn't get a room. We didn't get room.
I haven't, um, registered yet. You know, last year we were on the list. They got the good rooms.
Yep, it's on the seventeen.
I don't think that we are on one of those this year. They, they rotated.
Well, that's fair.
But, yeah, it would be really nice. Um, I really need for the board to help me out with this thing on our, um, talking with our delegates anyway, about trying to get our money back. Um, what was it called?
The Madison Agreement.
Yes, sir.
But, you know, we, we need an act to go that day, the, the delegate day, and do that again.
I think we need to go. I, I don't think we need to go.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be during this anyway. That's a different thing.
I just think it'd be great to have another day for you go and just go and visit and, and do some talking, because this is going to have to be on the table. Before it gets to be somewhere.
You mean Richmond meeting?
Yes, that's Richmond.
Like you went down and talked to.
Right.
Yeah, that's right. Well, you know, Weaver's the one that really we need to be talking to, and he said we could talk to him at his office in the morning.
Right, right. We could go to his office. I mean, I've been to his office before.
Always waiting for him to have a little meeting.
Okay.
We need it.
As long as I'm here.
Need it at the country gathering.
Yeah, I'm there.
Have a little team there, that's a good idea. So I didn't know if it's put in Mr., um, Ms. Meyer and Mr. Grove, if y'all want to do it, or, I know Ms. Johnson, you've been a part of that all along. Are you going to separate these two things?
Do you mean, like, well, I think this should be separated from the convention, like, because to me, it's entirely two different things and it's two different people you're talking with. And at the convention, you don't hear anybody that's talking. I think that's the, you know, it's more important to me than, than the convention we could do.
Yep. It depends on what they decide in the convention. It could be some silly thing where they need a book in the convention.
Well, but, but they're not going to be talking about what we're talking about. It's like, come on.
No, I think we do that.
Yeah, and I think, I don't, I, you know, with me, I would go any day, any day to Richmond. I would go any day down to what we would have, you know, if the two are the same, and, uh, whom I would. Uh, because, well, when we went to Richmond before, we also talked to, uh, to Tyler too. We just happened to meet him. They, they offices are right together now. And so we, you know, we talked to both of them, but I, I really feel like that Tyler had done much more. Well, he's the one that got the money for us. I don't care whether anybody likes to hear me say that or not, but I, I worked with him and he worked hard on it. And I can say, we were right then and suddenly done everything. I mean, he told, he told me he looked into it. And I, I mean, I'm not saying he didn't, but I heard from the other side. I've heard plenty of him working. So therefore I feel like we need to go. I feel like we need to go and talk with him.
Well, there is a specific day for that.
Well, you're rich, yeah.
Oh, sure, oh, yeah.
Huh?
That's usually the capital one, and that's usually the, the whole budget. And I understand, because that's too late for this. This is a, a long before then.
Yeah.
Well, you have to make a point of, of going.
Well, that's what I'm saying, sure.
So here's the thing. It's easy to meet with Weaver and Morton.
Yes.
Put it on the calendar, and we sent two board members and our superintendent. And during that meeting, we, uh, say, "Now, do you, are you going to be able to, uh, push this forward, or do we need to go to Richmond?"
Well, that's right.
And, and, uh, and maybe we'll go anyway, but at least, uh, get in front of it.
Actually, when we went to Richmond, I talked to the, to the chairman of the preparation committee, who was still in her, her house. But now he's not on that committee now, like, he's gone, he's over on that recording, that's, that's, and I don't know the regular.
So we need to skip the topic with Weaver. How are we going, who's going to take the lead on that? Will we take the lead on that?
We can, we can, um, follow it sometimes if he's available.
That's good.
If that's okay.
And then we'll figure out what the board member can go along. And the topic will be specifically the Madison Agreement.
Yes, I, yes. There's another name for that.
Supplemental, please.
Thank you. Supplemental basic aid.
Because when they're two, they're different things though.
But that is the Madison Agreement.
Supplemental basic aid is the real thing. We just call it the Madison Agreement.
Well, I know that, but I thought it was two things, though, the supplemental basic aid, too.
There's, there's, uh, basic aid and then there's supplemental basic aid.
This is supplemental basic.
This is supplemental.
And that's a hundred K.
More like two hundred.
About two fifty. It was, it started out to be two fifty.
That we didn't get working down.
That we did not get.
Well, they told us that they, uh, Mary, that that had nothing to do. Both of them.
Come on.
And they said that.
No, no, it was what we done.
And, um.
They did those.
All right, good. So we have a plan. Thank you. All right. All right, moving on to public comments. If anybody would like to share anything with the board tonight. From the public. Going once? Going twice. Welcome to the July meeting. Uh, moving on to action items. Entertain a motion that we approve the annual resolutions as presented tonight.
All right.
We have a motion from Ms. Johnson, a second. Mr. Grove, is there any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Entertain a motion to approve the, uh, tuition for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen as presented tonight. We have a motion from Ms. Meyer.
Sir.
Second, Mr. Uven. Is there any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered. Is there a motion to, uh, to approve the food and service bids as presented this evening?
Certainly.
A motion from Ms. Johnson, second, Mr. Uven. Is there any discussion? Pay for the piece of carrots?
Yeah, yes.
Bread and butter.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? It's ordered. Entertain a motion for the approval of the BSBA delegate and alternate delegate.
Certainly.
A motion from Ms. Johnson, second, Mr. Uven. Before they change their minds.
Right.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Are you for the motion?
Yes.
Aye?
Aye.
For, no?
Aye, I said aye.
All in favor, aye? Opposed, no? Is there any new business this evening? The next regularly scheduled school meeting is August the ninth, I believe. Is that correct? I think it's the ninth. Tuesday evening, uh, and I don't think we have any other meetings scheduled at this time. Uh, entertain a motion to adjourn. So, Mr. Uven, second. Mr. Grove, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Entertain, thank you for coming.